That's okay, we can do the pledge alone. Pledge you're writing it over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just as it is. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Quorm is present for the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority Parking Authority and Joint Powers Authority.
Public comment. Any persons wishing to... The library lecture hall. Do we have any persons for public comment?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Ray Lawson with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. My comment is on the PLAs in the city of Inglewood. Hey, it's boomtown in Inglewood right now. Everywhere you look, you see a lot of construction going on. SoFi Stadium just finished up. We as carpenters, my job as business rep is to ensure that Inglewood residents stay working on these projects. When SoFi Stadium started, we had several dozens of our members working there. But once the project was completed, they're not working anymore. They're not able to find work, a good paying job, a career job. What happens is project labor agreements are limited in their scope of work and in their ability to keep Inglewood residents working full time. Any upcoming work, Metro Rail, the Clippers Arena, yeah, they'll work on those projects while they're being done. But future work, in order for them to journey out and become a journeyman, a skilled craftsman, it's not guaranteed under a project labor agreement. So at the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, what we offer is skilled and trained workforce and a community wealth where going forward, we would like to be able to present that to you, Honorable Mayor Buds. Our plan on how to evolve to take the project labor agreement to the next level in order to keep Inglewood residents working and also able to be able to afford to live here, work here, be able to afford a home here, continue to work here with all this construction going on, with all these projects going on. We have apprenticeship programs. A lot of the contractors that are working on a lot of these mixed uses that are going on in Inglewood, a lot of the building and construction that you see, they're from out of this area. They bring in work from out of the Inglewood area, from out of the greater LA area, and that affects Inglewood instruction worker. That affects him in that way. So what we would propose is to offer skilled and trained workforce for every contractor that works in Inglewood with all this work going on, be able to have an apprenticeship program, a healthcare plan for their employees, and to do local hires.
Sir.
Hire disadvantaged workers.
This is not on the agenda, and so I've tried to politely interrupt you, but this would be for the one minute open comment at the end, but you got two and a half minutes, so we're gonna have to cut it right now.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Buds, for your time.
Very welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. Item one, CSA one and H1.
Uh, warrant register.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members, successor agency members and housing authority members. Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Buds.
Aye. Now, the next wave of public hearings, we're gonna do all at once because they're basically all the same type of public hearing. So we're gonna call PH1, PH2, PH3.
Mayor. We're gonna point a clarification. PH1 is by itself, and then PH2 through PH5 will be done collectively if you like.
Okay, so then we'll do PH1. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider the introduction of an ordinance approving zoning code amendment 2020-001 to Chapter 12 of the Inglewood Municipal Code to modify regulations for off hour parking for major event patrons and tailgating citywide.
Has a notice of the hearing been given in the time form and manners required by law? And do you have the affidavit on file?
Notice has been given and an affidavit is on file.
How many communications have been received on the matter?
No communications have been received.
Is there staff report?
Yes, Ms. Mindy, will manager will give the staff report?
I don't think she's coming.
No, she's there.
Oh. I'm looking for her to walk up. All right. Ms. Will Cox, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. Today before you is a zoning code amendment to modify regulations related to parking for major event patrons and tailgating regulations. And this code amendment, for your information, was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on April 14th, 2021. So the first topic, parking for major event patrons. The code currently allows for private businesses to sell parking spaces to attendees of the events held at the Forum or SoFi Stadium. If they're located within 1,500 feet of those sites, they can sell their parking spaces. As proposed and recommended by the Planning Commission, they recommend expanding that area beyond 1,500 feet, essentially citywide, however located only on major arterials. The sites would need to be occupied by non-residential uses to be able to take advantage of this provision. They would have to have a minimum of 10 parking spaces available to sell, and they could demonstrate availability of parking in three different ways. Currently, as allowed in the code, the business on site can just be closed during the time of the special event. Another second option would be that the site could have excess parking beyond code requirements. And the third option is that they get approval for a special use permit to allow for a shared parking arrangement on the sites. Second topic of this code amendment is tailgating. Currently in the code, it does not address tailgating outside of the Hollywood Park specific plan where tailgating is permitted by right. But outside of that, tailgating is not addressed in the code, and it's anticipated that with the start of the football season, with fans attending, that there will be a desire for people to tailgate within the city. As such, the regulations recommended by the Planning Commission include parameters for tailgating within the city outside of Hollywood Park. So the first provision or baseline proposed in the ordinance is to establish definitions for tailgating and tailgating events. Tailgating is the more traditional format of tailgating where you have individual parties or individual vehicles doing their own tailgate activity on a site you have multiple groups. And then a tailgating event is an organized tailgating event with an operator that brings in all the food and entertainment for all the attendees to participate in. So as proposed, regulations for tailgating would allow tailgating to occur in the CR Zone, which essentially includes the Forum, would be the primary site that could utilize this, and it would be subject to permits and licenses approval and subject to operational standards and prohibitions. Some of those operational standards include provisions about for sounds, amplified sound would have to end when the major event ends, and for hours of operation, the tailgating could start as early as 7:00 AM, but no earlier than four hours before the major event that it's associated with, and then it would end an hour after the major event has ended. And then in terms of site cleanup, that would need to occur by 11:59 on the date of the event. For tailgating events, they are, this is proposed on more sites within the city, again at the Forum or the CR Zone. They would also be allowed at the IBEC sites, however only on surface lots or on the rooftop of a parking structure. And they'd also, tailgating events would also be allowed on private sites located within one mile of the Hollywood Park site for their events occurring at, or the major event venues in the city. As with tailgating, it would be subject to permits and licenses approval and subject to the same operational standards and prohibitions as tailgating. Oh, and one of my maps is not showing up for some reason. But just to elaborate on the one mile radius from Hollywood Park, it would include those properties within a mile, but also encompass whatever block that one mile radius covers. So it wouldn't end necessarily at one property, it would encompass the whole block covered that is touched by the one mile radius. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions we may have.
Okay, is there any public comment at the lecture hall?
No, Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Okay, with that, if there are no council comments, I move to, and I give a motion away for the reading.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Uh, Mayor, we're gonna affirm the categorical exception.
Yeah, affirming number two and moving, and motion away for the reading.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Thank you. Council members. Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, and I'll introduce the ordinance. Now, the other public hearings, PH2, 3, 4, and 5 are assessment, maintenance assessment districts, so if you would just read them and we'll take them all at once.
Yes, sir. The next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider assessment levies for the Darby-Dixon Maintenance Assessment District number 1987-1, for the In-Town Maintenance Assessment District number 1975-1, for the Morningside Park Maintenance Assessment District 1974-2, and then for the Inglewood Street Lighting Assessment District 1980-1.
All right, has a notice of the hearings been given in the time form and manners required by law? And do you have the affidavit on file?
Notice has been given and an affidavit is on file.
Any communications are received on these banners?
No communications have been received.
Okay, so I realize there's a staff report, but Mr. Atwell, bear in mind, we've been doing this since 1974, so this is nothing new.
No, I haven't been. No, I'll go through it fairly rapidly. Okay. So first of all, good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. The first item is the Darby-Dixon Maintenance Assessment District. The Darby-Dixon Maintenance District number 1987-1 is located within the city of Inglewood, and I think we all know where it's located, within the city. The district was formed in 1986 to provide funding to upgrade and maintain existing public improvements to street sidewalks, parkways, alleys, and general landscape maintenance. Street sweeping services are provided once a week, and the maintenance of alleys and parkways occurs three times per week. The annual assessment for the Darby-Dixon District, which only affects parcel owners in the district, has remained constant at about $66,000 since fiscal year 92-93. During the current fiscal year, the estimated costs are about $127,000, which result in a potential general fund subsidy of $64,840. For the upcoming fiscal year, which this report is for, the projected cost to maintain the district is $131,000, which may result in a general fund subsidy of about $66,527. And staff proposes the service levels remain the same, and that concludes my report for PH2. PH3, this item is the In-Town Maintenance District. The In-Town Maintenance District is also located within the city of Inglewood. The district was formed in 1975 at the request of local business owners to attract customers and increase business patronage, and provides funding for tree trimming, street and sidewalk maintenance, sign replacements, placement of pavement markings, and incidental improvement activity. Services are provided twice a week. The annual assessment for the In-Town District, which only affects the parcel owners within the district, has remained generally the same since 1992-93, which is about $72,000. For fiscal year 21-22, the projected cost to maintain the district is expected to be about $236,000, resulting in $164,000 general fund subsidy, and staff recommends that the services remain the same. PH4, which is the Morningside Park Maintenance Assessment District, again, this was brought by the property owners and directly benefits only those property owners within the district, and funding is provided for repair, construction, or maintenance of the parkways, parking lots, medians, decorative lighting, landscaping, and other incidental improvement activity. Services are provided four days per week. The annual assessment for the Morningside Park, which only affects those property owners, has remained generally about $86,000 since fiscal year 92-93. The expected maintenance costs incurred for the city for 21-22 is gonna be about $157,000 with a general fund subsidy of $71,000. And staff again recommends that this remain, that services remain unchanged. And then the final one, which is PH5, this is the Street Lighting Assessment District. Street lighting services provided entirely within the city boundaries. The retrofitting of existing fixtures, energy efficient lighting along main corridors, landscaping maintenance activities are also funded along these corridors. The annual assessment district, the amount of the annual assessment district is about $2.4 million and has been that way since 90, that the levels remain unchanged. And that concludes my report for all the districts.
Thank you. Any public comment?
Of two speakers.
Go ahead, sir.
Honorable Mayor Buds, and I stand the Inglewood City Council. Once again, my name is Ray Lawson with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, and as I explained before, project labor agreements, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
The end.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, once again, project labor agreements are limited.
No, okay, you're gonna make me push this mute button. This is not the time, not right now. This is only on the public hearings.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. I move to adopt a resolution modifying and/or amendment district for the Morningside Park Maintenance Assessment District. Oh, okay. Right ahead.
We have one speaker, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Pablo, and I've been a resident here at District 4 for over 15 years, and when I first moved in here with my family, there was abundant parking, when you guys had one ways going west and east.
This is for the, for the public hearings on the assessment districts. If you have a general public comment or a comment on another item, you'll have to do it at the end of the meeting.
Right.
Right now, this is just for these assessment districts we're talking about.
Okay, yeah, I did make sure that that was clear, but I was signaled to go ahead and...
Okay.
So I'll sit down and I'll wait to the end.
There you go, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right. So I make a motion, modifying and/or approving the engineer's report and ordering improvements in the levy collection of assessments within the city of Inglewood's Darby-Dixon Maintenance Assessment District, within the city of Inglewood In-Town Maintenance Assessment District, with, for the Morningside Park Maintenance Assessment District, and the Inglewood Street Lighting Assessment District.
I second that motion.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye. Consent calendar, items 2 through 7.
All moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, oh, one.
Staff report recommending adoption of ordinance number 21-11 to amend Chapter 10, Article 5, and Chapter 12, Article 23 of the Inglewood Municipal Code to modify signage regulations to permit certain banners in the public right of way.
Motion away for the reading.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye. DR1.
Staff report recommending the adoption of resolutions calling for the holdings of a special municipal election on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, for the submission to the voters of question relating to increasing both the city's real estate transfer tax and the city's transient occupancy tax.
Okay, is there a staff report?
Yes, Ms. Sharon Kwayke, Assistant Planning Director, will give the staff report.
Good afternoon, Mayors and members of the City Council. To give you a background on these items, the city of Inglewood has been facing unprecedented times enduring the impacts of more than a year of a global pandemic, has taken a personal and economic toll on the city, its residents, and local businesses with persistent demand for city services with reduced revenues. In recent months, the city has engaged in budget discussions regarding the upcoming fiscal 21-22 fiscal year. The fiscal analysis undertaken as part of that exercise has evidenced that the expenses during the period of the COVID-19 pandemic have outpaced the city revenues in increasing severity. Specifically, on September 29th, 2020, the mayor and the city council adopted a fiscal 2021 consolidated annual operating budget, which projected revenues under expenses and resulting in a general fund projected operational deficit of approximately $9.7 million. In addition, the city council approved an additional general fund expenses of about $2.2 million, resulting in a total of approximately a $12 million operating deficit for this current fiscal year. The city council has sought long-term viable solutions to ensure our fiscal stability of the city while identifying additional funding for the various capital improvement projects. Subsequently, the city staff has contracted with professionals such as Ernst &amp; Young and Kaiser Marston to research and identify some long-term financial planning opportunities by receiving the city's current finances, comparing the city's current municipal tax rates with those of neighboring jurisdictions, and forecasting some budget projections associated with recommending some tax rate increases on our annual, on an annual basis going forward. Based on these analyses, the city has determined that the best solution for addressing both the city's immediate funding issues precipitated by the COVID-19 pandemic with the city's longer-term financial planning needs is one involving a proposal to increase the tax rates of the city's real estate. Yes. The real estate transfer tax and also the city's transient occupancy tax, or better known as the TOT tax. What I'd like to do is walk you through a presentation, the guideline of these two ballot measures. Okay. I'd like to give you an overview of the two ballot measures. The ballot measures' purpose and requirements, the fiscal emergency declaration, and the call for the special election, a request for the county services to administer the special election, and authorization for the mayor and the council to submit the arguments, and to also give you a summary of the next steps and timeline. The city is proposing two tax measures to hold a special election on November 2nd. Ballot measure number one is to increase the transient occupancy tax from 14% to 15.5%. It's projected that this increase, if successful, would generate approximately $730,000 in additional revenues on an annual basis for the general fund. Ballot measure number two would be to increase the real estate transfer tax to a multi-tiered approach. This potential new revenue would generate approximately $3.5 million to the city's general fund. The total anticipated new annual revenues to the city's general fund would be approximately $4.2 million. Ballot measure number one, we've identified as the Inglewood Community Services Protection Measure. That one is for the transient occupancy tax. Ballot measure number two, we've identified as the Inglewood Public Safety and Essential Services, and that one is for the increase in the tiered real estate transfer tax rates. The transient occupancy tax, or the TOT tax, is charged only to users who occupy rooms of hotels and motels, in tourist homes and houses, studio hotels, and other lodging for a period of less than 30 days per the city's municipal code. The TOT was last updated in 1998, and any increases in the TOT would impact only those who stay in hotel and motel rooms, which basically targets visitors coming into the city and travelers. While many of our jurisdiction, our neighboring jurisdictions have an equivalent or lower TOT rates, we have some samples of some that are higher in many of the key entertainment hubs. Los Angeles, for instance, has a 14% TOT rate, plus they charge an additional 1.5 media district fee for a total of 15.5%. Anaheim has a 15% TOT rate, they also charge 2%, but they levy for bond indebtedness, so their total rate is 17%. Some of the other cities that we have, the background on the transfer tax is on this schedule. Our current real estate transfer tax rate is currently 55 cents per thousand dollar of sales value. The county also charges 55 cents per thousand dollars of sales value, and each, each is paid, each property tax transfer is paid at a dollar ten of thousand, per thousand dollars of sales value, and it is collected by the LA County Recorder's Office. Our real estate transfer tax rate has not been updated since 1967, and on average, over the last several years, the city has collected approximately $300,000 in real estate transfer tax. In this chart, there's five other California jurisdictions. Most, if not all, have a higher municipal tax rates than what we're proposing here. Most, if not all, have a higher municipal tax rates than what we're proposing here. If you have any questions, please let me know. To summarize how we structured our tiered rate, what we are proposing is on the property value range, for, we have four tiers, we are proposing a tiered structure as well. For most of the, ninety-eight percent of the single-family homes in the City of Inglewood, they will not see a change at all. They basically fall between tier one and tier two. Only two percent of the.
However, in addition to that, let's make it clear, even though that vast majority does not follow with that, fall within that range, that this doesn't come into play until a property is sold and it, and the amount comes from the proceeds paid by the buyer.
That is correct.
All right, so even if they were, it, it's paid by the buyer.
That is correct, and that is only when a transfer of a sale takes place.
Yes.
If you do not move or transfer, it doesn't, you basically have no impact.
Okay.
This graph also, this chart also shows that the biggest impact would be to those hitting in tiers three and four, and those prop, those sales values would be anything over and above two point five million. So you can see two point five million to ten million would fall in tier three, and anything over ten million dollars in sales value would fall into tier four.
Okay.
Any.
Okay, I, I want to make, I mean, I'm going to turn it over to the rest of the council, but one of the things I want very clear, this has nothing to do with your property tax bill and payments.
That's correct.
This occur, this occurs, and it has been occurring forever.
Yes.
But it's just been at the lowest rate, one of the lowest rates that the county allows. And so what's happening is, is that this, it's like a sales tax on property is being increased to be more competitive with other cities in the county.
Yes.
All right. Any council comment? Councilman Padilla.
Thanks, Mayor, you know, very, very good, you know, presentation, very appreciative of that information. But again, you know, I mean, the mayor made it clear, you reiterate, reiterated, you know, because, you know, what happens is the, the community thinks that, oh, my God, my property taxes are going to go up, you guys are going to make me have to pay more, and, and I, we just need to make sure, and I know we will as, as, as this, you know, begins to move forward, assuming, you know, that's where it's going to go, which I think it will, how we educate folks on this proposal for the ballot. Because we got to be very clear that it's a tiered structure. Would you say like ninety-eight percent of the single-family residences will not, in all likelihood, be impacted by this? Those additional taxes will be paid by the buyer, and, and the, the person selling their home, nobody's putting a gun to their head. If they want to sell it, they sell it, if they don't, they don't, you know? But if they want to reap the benefits, let's say it's somebody that's owned their property for years, great opportunity, and we're not trying to stop that. You know, we're just trying to get.
And it sells for over one point one million.
Exactly, and which a lot of them are going to hit that mark soon, if they haven't already. All we're trying to do is get to where other cities are, because we deserve that here in the City of Inglewood, right? I think you said that this thing goes back to sixty-seven, nineteen.
Nineteen sixty-seven, yes.
You know, so, so you look at that, you know, we've, we haven't done anything with this. It's time. It's time that we do it, it's time that we move forward, and, and there's no time better than the present. So I want to thank you for your report.
Okay, Councilman Morales.
And just to, to go one step further, right now, for every one thousand dollars, the city is getting fifty-five cents, is that correct?
Correct.
And if you, if there's a transaction in, let's say, Culver City, for every thousand dollars, they're getting four dollars and like fifty cents, something like that, right?
That's correct.
So we are very far from our neighbors. And you know what it is, is that, I, I got some calls, you know, people are alarmed because of the fiscal emergency and everything else. This is something that cities are addressing across the state. We're actually in a good place because when we came to staff and really started to think about where are our avenues to start to see revenue streams, this was one of them, and it was one of them because we did not take advantage of this when we could have years ago. We did not act out in that fashion. And this is a great opportunity to use this moment, now that the COVID has made its impact, for us to continue our growth as we are moving. That's why, you know, cities are made by decisions like this, and this is going to be one that's going to help us to continue to invest in ourselves, to continue to move the city forward in a way that we've started to. Annually, we have been very fortunate to have some of our developments push and get our, our one-time payments that have allowed us to stay in a certain place. This will actually make it even more firm for us to move forward as a city. And this is just the real estate transfer tax. We discussed the TOT tax, which is basically what everybody pays when they stay at a hotel. Of course, if you stay in a hotel in Santa Monica, you're going to pay an exorbitant amount. In Las Vegas, you stay, you pay a tremendous amount. We're just moving it up at par because these are visitors that will take advantage of our streets, of our sidewalks, of our amenities around the city, and that's why we, we apply these costs. So these costs will go a long way. I think the number was seven hundred and something thousand that we will see immediately with our increase in hotels. The beauty of this particular tax is that we are going to see more hotels being built. We are going to see more high-level hotels being built, and our potential here for visitors to absorb that growth for us is there. Again, the beauty of the TOT tax is that it affects our residents only positively. They will see it as a benefit one hundred percent based on the fact that, that they're living in their homes and not staying at the hotels. The taxes are, are a city to be a destination, and those visitors that we have not been able to capitalize on, we are now assembling a program to do so. So I just wanted to, that's my two cents.
And, and a close look, we've been very fiscally responsible over the years, and we've known about that we needed to change this tax for quite some time. We're at the bottom of the tier. And, but the, the reality was, is that we save money, we have more money reserves than we ever did. However, it's like having money in your savings account, but your checking account is not going to pay all the bills for the year, and you're going to have to dip into your savings. We have great expectations that, you know, the entertainment that we've attracted to our city is going to make us more financially stable than other cities. However, then came COVID, and now's come the variant. So just the same way that we save money in case we didn't realize the revenues we anticipated, that's why we're in the position that we are now. And so now is definitely the time to prepare ourselves for the future, to be solid financially. And so with that, is there a motion?
I will move items one, two, three, and four, Mayor.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmembers Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. A one.
Thank you, Mayor.
CM One.
Thank you, Mayor, there are no reports from the City Manager's Office.
CC One.
Yes, Mayor, real brief, just wanted to first wish my council member, he's my councilman, Councilman Dotson, a happy belated birthday from last week.
Georgie.
You celebrated a birthday. So happy birthday to you, councilman.
You forty-four, George?
I, I didn't say it last Tuesday, but happy birthday to you, councilman.
Happy birthday, Georgie.
Yes, sir, and then to our mayor who celebrated a birthday this past weekend, also happy belated birthday to you as well.
What?
Yeah, you know.
That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I missed that.
That's right, Artie's, he's the same age as me.
Jesus, Artie.
Happy, happy birthday, Artie.
But Artie's older than me.
Artie just wants a free piece of cake, he's just like.
CSA Two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Who of approval?
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Successor Agency Members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, Madam City Clerk?
Housing Authority Members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, adjourn the housing authority, P One.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Who of approval?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Parking Authority Members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, adjourn the parking authority, JPA One.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on March sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, and March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Who of approval?
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Joint Power Authority Members Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, adjourn the JPA. There are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Public comment, one minute.
Mayor Butts, Inglewood City Council Members Ray Lawson, Southwest Regional Council Carpenters. Once again, I'd like to express the opportunity to tell you, we're talking about careers, careers for Inglewood residents, long-lasting careers where they can buy a home, where they can be able to see their children go to high school and participate in sports and be dads and moms in their lives. And in Inglewood, we believe that that's possible, but PLA is limited, the Project Labor Agreement is limited, and we'd like to offer a skilled and trained workforce proposal that allows the residents of Inglewood that opportunity. So thank you, City Council, thank you, Mayor Butts, and we would like to propose this when we get a chance.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have one more speaker.
Thank you for your patience, sir.
Yes, thanks again, good afternoon, and, yeah, like I was saying earlier, I'm a resident of District Four for the past fifteen years, and the issue I see is that we've been going back and forth with trying to fix the parking situation since we can only park on one side. And I know the city has been doing several test phases of different of things to try to remedy the situation. I propose that in District Four, what I see is that if we're able to cut, you know, half the grass on one side of the street, like either the north or the south, we can increase the width, you know, of the street, and we can have parking on both sides. And I just want to add, the City of Lenox, to the west of us, they have the same width of street, and they park on both sides of the street. I, I'm just here to let you guys know that I'm here to help out the city, I'm here to help out the residents, and I want to fix this issue because it's been a long time, fifteen years, and, yes, that, that's my concern for the parking.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, we'll close public comment. Council comments, Councilman Dotson, District One.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start off by congratulating Sabrina Barnes and the Recreation Department, Park and Recreation Department. On this past Saturday, July thirty-first, we wrapped up a movie in the Park Drive-In series at Edward Benson Park with a sold-out crowd. A great time was had by all. Aside from the movie, there were games for the kids and food trucks, and families that bought ten recycled items received a free gift. This was a great family event presented by the Park and Recreation Department in collaboration with the Environmental Service Division of Public Works. I understand some of the older adults that it took them back to the days of the Century Drive-In. I remember that. Plans are already in works for next year. Thank you so much, Sabrina. This was quite an event, and you too, Mr. Adwell. Mr. Mayor, I would like, if you would close the meeting in the honor of longtime member of Inglewood and my neighbor on Fourth Avenue, Ms. Fieldle Gardner. Forty years in teaching, and I've known her for fifty of those years. Wonderful person, great teacher, and. Will it miss? So with that, you guys have a wonderful day and a great week.
Thank you. Councilman Padilla, District Two.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just want to go back, you know, earlier, we had the report, or we approved the, the banners, you know? So some folks think that it involves banners going across the intersections, right? From one pole to another, and it's not that, it's the banners, like, let's say, this is the light pole. It's a banner that would be affixed on the light pole, kind of like a flag, that'll have the event on there. And, and so we'll identify these, there's a picture of it right there of what it will look like. So, and, and that's great, because it's about time that we get the ability to, to advertise these events throughout the city so that our community, not only here in Inglewood, but around the area, can come and celebrate all the positive, fun, exciting times here in Inglewood. So I want to thank the Planning Department and Public Works. You guys are going to be tasked with putting these together and working on this, so thank you so much. Also, that report on the off-hour parking for major events and the tailgating, thank you, very, very well done. Staff report, the planning commission worked hard, I understand, to get that thing to us. And, you know, it's a work in progress, you know? We're, we're going to float that out there, and we'll see how it works. And then if we need to tweak it, we'll bring it back and we'll tweak it. But at least now, we have something moving forward for these events that are going to occur either at the, at the Forum, at SoFi Stadium, and in the future at the Clippers Arena. And if you looked at all the different restrictions that are going to be put on there, you know, it really makes a lot of sense. And so, you know, a lot of thought and, and hard work went into this staff report. So I want to thank everybody involved in putting that together, I very much appreciate it. This past weekend, I know the mayor and I, and I know the other council members had an opportunity to go to the Inglewood Unified School District's enrollment and family resource, enrollment and family resource fair. And it was a very well-attended community event, highlighting our different schools and all the resources that the school district has to offer. So I want to thank Dr. Torres and all our staff for this awesome community event. Mayor, if you would please close in the memory and honor of Mr. Malcolm N. Bennett. You know, he's worked so many years in, in the real estate business, and just a dear friend to all of us, and he passed away back on July twenty-first, and may his soul rest in eternal peace. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fogg, District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. So, a couple of things, now, we are all aware that we have this, the Delta variant that's happening, so we're starting to receive more information as far as, I'm sorry, excuse me. Excuse me. On the, I know.
How ironic, man.
I lost my voice. Receive more information on getting vaccinations, and also on what, how to, you know, tracking the Delta variant and updated CDC guidelines. So Kaiser Permanente is offering a COVID-nineteen vaccination awareness with Dr. Ahmad August fifth, coming up from ten-thirty AM to eleven-thirty. It'll also have additional information on the Delta variant and how that's affecting LA County and specifically City of Inglewood. So you can go on to Kaiser Permanente's website to receive the most current information. Also, there is a webinar that's happening for the South Bay City of Governments, and it's a community event. They're going to give information on proposed state laws that will drastically change single-family neighborhoods. Very important webinar that's coming up. They're going to go into detail about Senate bills, SB Nine and SB. They're going to go into detail about Senate bills, S B nine and S B 10, and it will affect residents in, in Inglewood, in L.A. County, and the state of California. So for more information on that, you can go to South Bay City of Government's COG. That webinar will be happening on August 7th at 10 a.m., and you can feel free to reach out to my office as well to receive that information or go to their website for the information. But I think it's very important for everybody to educate themselves on what's happening with those two legis, those two Senate bills. Also, we have some great news. We're able to implement some radar sensors and flashing red lights in District Four. I did receive a lot of complaints that there was a lot of speeding happening in District Four, so. Well, all the rest, all the districts, but worked with our city heads, and we all put our, our minds together, and we got those implemented. Mayor did a lot of help in that area, so they're really happy, and so we are celebrating together with that, so they seem very happy. And lastly, Mayor, if you could close in honor of Gloria Gibson Morrison. She was a District Four resident, she passed away last week. She was a member of Century Heights and also the scholarships chair. So if you can close in her honor, thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Morales, District Three.
Thank you, real quick, everything was covered, that was good. The I U S D event was awesome. Thank you to the school district. I know I saw Dionne there as well, and probably everybody showed up, which is great, to show support and mostly just to show the residents that we're all working together, it was fun. I want to go back on this whole thing, which will be part of, of the campaign that we're all going to see out there, and there's so many, so many ways to look at it. But I feel good that we're finally going to go out and, and really invest in ourselves. I wanted to point out that earlier, we heard staff talk about our assessment districts, and I wanted to point out that, that it's not always that we, we just, we, we don't get to point out the fact that when we decide not to make these changes, that impact the residents. I believe that altogether, the assessments, every year, we subsidize it with the general fund to the degree of 1.6 million dollars. Now, those assessment districts, we could go back out and say, hey, they're not paying for themselves. Folks decided to tax themselves back in 1976, or whatever year that was. They did not provide for those changes. We, as a city, have continuously decided to subsidize that. And so these changes that we're making, and these abilities that we have to really take care of our city, we all have to be in on it, because that, those are the decisions we continuously made and make, and actually, that one we make every year, as the mayor mentioned earlier. So I just wanted to point that out, so I look forward to that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And, and to affirm once again, the real estate transfer tax is, has always been here. It's been about fifty-five cents per thousand. It's, it's the lowest it can be, and we have not changed it. There are people coming to the city, spending big money on commercial properties, and this is going to infect commercial transfers paid for by the purchaser. It comes out at the end of escrow. So we want to make that very clear to everybody. This is not going to affect your property tax bill. I'm going to say that again, it's not going to affect your property tax bill. Before I close the meeting, I want to talk a little bit about an offshoot of speeding that Councilman, Councilwoman Falk talked about. There are these takeovers where they take over an intersection, and they burn rubber, and they have crowds of like a hundred people. Okay, let me tell you something, that's illegal, it's anarchistic, and it's not going to continue. And we have plans for you. So I want to tell you, if you ever listen to a council meeting, we have plans for you if you keep coming to the city of Inglewood. Now with that, and you'll find out what they are. I'm going to close the meeting in the name of Theola Gardner, Anumis Gardner. She moved here in 1962. That would make her one of the first blacks or black families to move into the city of Inglewood. Also closing in the name of Gloria Gibson Morrison, and, and in the name of a good friend, Malcolm Bennett, the president of the Apartment Owner Association, just a ball of fire, and it was so, so unexpected. And with that, we adjourn.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you.